Special Education and Neighborhoods Committee meeting. Today is Friday, June 4th. It's now 1:47 PM. Sorry that we're getting a little bit of a late start. We just concluded council a moment ago. We have one item on the agenda today. Further consideration of the proposals for consolidation of Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and the CDD. After consideration of that item, we'll be taking general public comment. So let's proceed now to item number one. By the way, the Honorable Councilmember Janice Hahn is here with me today. So we have a quorum, and delighted that we have a quorum, by the way. And I'd ask the CLA to introduce this item. Mr. Powell.
Thank you. Item number one is a communication from the mayor and a draft ordinance relative to the consolidation of the Community Development Department and the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment under authority granted by Section 514 of the Los Angeles City Charter. Also, this item has been referred to the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, but has not been scheduled as of yet.
All right. So we've had considerable discussion already about this proposal. We had extensive discussion and public comment at the previous meeting. I'd like to invite now, if I could, Representative Mayor's Office, Mr. Gross to come on up. And if we can start with Mr. Gross to discuss the status of this matter. And then I'd also ask that the CLA's office, the CAO, and Dun staff be standing at the ready in case we have further questions. But, Mr. Gross, your -- the Mayor's Office and my office have had considerable continuing discussion about this item, which I very much appreciate. I think it's been a very productive dialogue that we've had. And I'd like to ask you to present about the status of matters and where the Mayor's proposal is as it stands now, and we can go from there. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman, and good afternoon, Councilwoman Hahn. I wanted to begin again by thanking the committee for the opportunity to come and talk about the Mayor's proposal. As you mentioned, there's been a lot of discussion before and after this proposal. I think, you know, I was going to begin by kind of getting into some of the specifics that you raised and Mr. -- at the last meeting about the specific numbers, as Representative from the CAO's office who can get a little bit more specific on the numbers. But I think probably just for -- just so we're all kind of on the same page, I think maybe I'll start instead on a request I'll be making at the end of the -- at the end of the committee meeting, so I'll kind of bookend it. It's been clear since the Mayor's proposal that there is -- there are a lot of opinions out there and a lot of different ideas. The mayor is still very supportive of neighborhood empowerment, very supportive of neighborhood councils, and very supportive of making sure that the services that need to be provided to those groups gets provided in the best, most efficient, obviously, but the best way possible to empower the community, to represent the community. Because there's such interest and because there's been a lot of outpouring of comments, the request that I'll make at the end is for the committee to, in addition to a couple of other things, make a recommendation, a negative recommendation on the Mayor's proposal temporarily, so we can extend this conversation longer. There needs to be a lot more exchange, I think, out in the public, both in -- probably both in City Hall and Education Neighborhoods Committee and in the various alliances and in whatever forums we can create or provide. But the Mayor's proposal under Section 514 of the City Charter only allows for 45 days for the council to act. And so because there's more time needed, the request in the Mayor's office is going to be to have a negative recommendation from this committee to forward to council, so the 45-day clock is not -- is no longer a gun to our heads, for lack of a better term. We do hope that there will be, you know, some -- we'll talk about some timelines and what kind of length we're talking about. There's an odd period we're in right now as far as what exists. There's been, because of some actions by the mayor, some actions by the city council, we're in an odd limbo period because of some of the early retirements, because some of the transfers, because some of the thousand position eliminations that we did as part of the budget solving measures. So we'll need to hopefully move expeditiously in figuring out kind of what the next step for neighborhood empowerment within the city is. Last week, I thought that the discussion was very helpful. At least from Mayor's Office perspective, I thought it was very helpful to have some exchange with the committee and hear back from the community some more. I think we established the need to look at the next stage of neighborhood empowerment within the city. As I mentioned before, the first, you know, the first 10 years was about creating a system and creating and certifying neighborhood councils, and now we need to figure out kind of what the next step is and how we can best serve neighborhood councils. As requested by both Councilmen at the last meeting, the CAO's here with specific breakdowns of numbers. I don't know if we can -- up to the committee, obviously, if you want to go over some of those numbers, if you want to take it under advisement, but I believe -- is there copies that we can provide at some point? Okay. So we can give some more specific numbers about the cost savings that we're talking about. But one thing I wanted to mention, that I touched a little bit on last time, was that, you know, some critique that coming from the committee was the 1.5 proposed cost savings is not a large sum of money. And that's true when we're talking about the half a billion dollar deficit the city was facing, you know, a few months ago. And I thought that it may be the wrong -- while that was the inspiration for starting this process, that it may not be the right context. The context was more where I started my comments about looking at what the next stages are, looking at what we do next for neighborhood councils. There's an opportunity here, I think, to see where we can help the neighborhood councils, help the ones that need help, where we can get out of the way of the ones that don't need help, and we can use the synergies to have them help each other. And all of these, I think all of these issues need to be, as I mentioned, discussed in a more robust, more robust discussion. Right now, we have a, you know, out of necessity, we shrank the department to 18 staff, and the mayor, at that point, felt the need to connect this department with another department so that that staff wasn't always under fire and so that staff would have more ability to expand. There's a question of whether we -- whether there are -- there's a question of whether there are other entities outside of the city that may help provide some of the services, or whether neighborhood councils can provide the services themselves with support from the department, obviously. Obviously, the question will come up whether it's a standalone department or whether it's combined with another department. The mayor has, you know, his particular proposal, which we hope to, you know, we hope to discuss as part of the robust discussion, but that, again, is going to be a larger discussion that I think we need. One thing I wanted to mention is that because we're in this odd period where the department is minimized at this point and the services have to continue, that I think we'll need to talk about whether it's a report back or whether it's just part of this discussion of what sort of things are needed in this interim period to make sure that neighborhood councils are supported the way they need to be supported, both, again, neighborhood councils that are well-functioning and neighborhood councils that are not. There's, I guess there was a question, you know, a question of professionalizing components of what neighborhood councils do. There was a question over elections, of whether it makes sense to professionalize the elections in neighborhood councils, and that was the inspiration for the city clerk taking over neighborhood council elections. And, you know, the follow-up question to that is the neighborhood council elections need to be run like presidential elections. Maybe and maybe not, but the city clerk, when you give the city clerk a job, they run an election the way that they run an election. And I think we've had, you know, some positive and negative feedback about the city clerk running the elections. Same thing with funding program, you know, their need to professionalize it, maybe and maybe not, but I hope that that discussion will also be part of our robust discussion. And that was, as I mentioned last week, was part of the motivation for the mayor suggesting CDD as the connection department for this, as they are professional money managers in addition to all the other things that they do. So I just want to put that context on where we are, but so to, again, bookend where we are and where I think we end up, is the request from our office will be to have the negative, you know, the negative recommendation from the committee to go forward to council, to put a halt on the 45-day clock. And then we can discuss with the community on when is the next appropriate place to, you know, to either start a new clock or to start a new process through legislative process initiated by council. I also -- where's my notes? There were a couple of things I wanted -- oh, because of this odd interim period, there's going to -- there's a need to, at least from our perspective, there's a need to move forward so when an ultimate -- when a decision is ultimately made as to how we're going to move forward, we want to be able to flip a switch and go. And so there's a question of leadership within the neighborhood empowerment. And so we would like to, you may have heard that there's a draft, a draft job announcement for an executive director. It hasn't been released, but we wanted to get some sort of support, if possible, from the committee to start that process, to look for leadership. We've got a pending resignation from the existing general manager of Dun. And regardless of whether we have a final decision right now of how the neighborhood -- providing of neighborhood power services is done in the future, there is a need to start the process to get us to a point to when that decision is made that we can be ready to go. So we'd like to get some level of support of going out to the public and soliciting input on what the leadership of neighborhood empowerment within the city would look like. At the same time, while it comes from the Mayor's proposal, we'd also like some sort of, some sense of support of going out with what CDD has proposed as an RFQ for nonprofits to just solicit input on what sort of services that nonprofits may be able to provide to neighborhood councils. Obviously, that may or may not be what's part of the final proposal, but because there are a number of paths we may end up going down, we want to be able to get as far down those concurrent paths for when there is a final decision that we can move forward regardless of how that works. And I mentioned, but again, since I'm kind of bookending, wanted to mention that there's also that need to figure out what in this interim the department needs. Right now, the department is not functional as a standalone department with the current situation because come July 1st, there's no official funding for specific positions that are necessary for a standalone department. So how exactly we figure that out, we'll have to talk about that for a general manager, an AGM, a personnel person, a payroll person, which in the end may or may not be necessary, but I think will have to be established. So really, what I'm saying is, one, I wanted to push pause on the clock so we can have a larger discussion, but also figure out how we deal with this interim period of time.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. It does indeed. Let me first say again how much I appreciate the cooperative approach that you and the Mayor's Office have taken in trying to work with us to develop a policy that fulfills the dual objectives of realizing budget savings, but at the same time also maximizing the effectiveness of neighborhood councils and the neighborhood empowerment movement as we're in this phase that I've described as sort of the adolescence. You know, we're 10 years into the program. It's time to really take a hard look at what the needs of the program are now, which are different than the needs were 10 years ago, and to look at how we can maximize effectiveness. And I think this little window of opportunity we have now presents exactly the right time to do that, to take a comprehensive look. But it is going to be a longer-term process than would be allowed through this normal budget cycle, through the proposed consolidation, the 45-day limitation that we have and so forth. So I'm looking forward to working with the mayor to go out to a broader swath of the public, to engage the neighborhood councils themselves to a much larger degree, to try to develop a consensus vision to the extent that that's going to be possible for how we can best move forward with a more effective and ideally less costly, but most important, a more effective neighborhood council movement. So I welcome the proposal that you have today. We'll have further discussion about it. On the RFQ issue, let me just make sure that everyone understands that by putting out an RFQ to determine whether there are outside agencies that might be able to take on some responsibilities that are currently being conducted by city agencies, the fact of doing that would not suggest in any way that the decision has even been made to send those responsibilities outside of the city family, number one. Number two, the parameters of what that RFQ would look like will not predetermine what our ultimate policy decisions will be. As I understand what's being suggested by the mayor and by Mr. Gross today, is that this is an information gathering tool which the Mayor's Office and this committee will be able to utilize to try to develop a more informed policy in these areas, but it doesn't for a moment presuppose any policy outcome. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that very clearly. We will have to have a continuing dialogue about interim needs. Certainly Dun already has had, as we all know, very, very severe cuts to its personnel, to its budget. And we will have to have a continuing dialogue as we move forward in the coming weeks and months for how best to maintain the core functions of that department, how best to service the immediate needs of the neighborhood council until we have a more complete architecture for how to move forward on reforming the larger policy on this. So I welcome that dialogue that we'll have probably in our meeting next week and continuing thereafter. So with that, Ms. Hahn, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm glad you clarified some of those issues. Yeah, I'm still extremely concerned in the direction or non-direction that we seem to be going in. I feel like we're doing this all wrong. I feel like there was a decision that was made to consolidate the department, to allow our general manager to resign, to lay off 20 people, with really not a lot of thought on how this was going to work and how in the future the duties and responsibilities in this department were going to be transferred or absorbed or deleted or contracted out. I mean, I feel like we're doing this backwards, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And I am pleased that the conversations are continuing. I'm pleased that we're, you know, withdrawing this in a way today, but it seems like, again, to me, we're doing it in reverse order. It seems like maybe we should have put a lot more effort, a lot more time into getting input of neighborhood councils. You know, we've had, you know, a Congress that we probably should have spent the whole Congress focusing on the future of neighborhood councils. I mean, I just feel like it's really more -- I think we've wasted a lot of time and money kind of working on a proposal that was not well-thought-out and, you know, really did not follow our charter in terms of making sure that each of the duties and responsibilities was accounted for in this transition. And obviously, I'm very personally, you know, passionate about this issue. This was the last department we've ever created, and that was the first department we created in a really long time, and we did that, you know, under the Charter Reform Commission. We thought, you know, creating this Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, you know, I hated that we called it Dun. I wanted us to kind of call it what it was. It was a Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Its only function was to empower neighborhood councils, our neighborhoods. And so kind of to see its demise in this way is painful to me, and I feel like, you know, we made some decisions without really carefully analyzing the impact that would have on neighborhood councils. And you're right, I mean, we kind of have come through the adolescence, or we're in the adolescence. We spent the first, you know, years really certifying neighborhood councils, but I still see a lot of issues with neighborhood councils. I still see a lot of needs of neighborhood councils that, you know, I haven't been able to fully be comforted in in this proposal that they were going to be taking care of under CDD. I mean, CDD has its own problems, you know, on a number of levels. I love them dearly, but they certainly are not the perfect department by any means. And I guess, you know, I just want to make sure, like even the RFP going out, you know, I'm not comfortable with doing all this until we know what we're trying to -- you only get back in an RFQ or RFP what you asked for. And I don't know if we're comfortable in even knowing what we're asking for until we come and we have this plan of how we want this to look like in the future. So, you know, I'm not comfortable wasting personnel, time, and money in going out for this kind of an effort, even though, and I'm glad Paul said, it in no way determines that that decision's been made, but why waste the time and effort if that's not the end plan? And I would hope that our current general manager is really helping us maybe craft the future of this department and craft the future of, you know, how these tasks and responsibilities, besides -- and by the way, there's a lot more than just neighborhood council funding that's at stake here. There's a lot more than that.
Absolutely.
And I would rather see us actually have a plan on how we want to move forward before we begin spending time and money on doing RFQs and RFPs. That's my personal feeling.
Can I comment?
Of course you can.
Yes, but before you do, just for the sake of clarification, there is much more to do, much more involved than neighborhood council funding. And in fact, the one thing that is not at issue is neighborhood council funding. So for the sake of clarity, there's no proposal to cut neighborhood council funding.
No, I didn't mean -- no, no, I agree. But to deal with how they're funded, I guess that was one of the --
Administration of it, certainly.
No, you're right. You're right.
That's right. I just want to make sure everybody was clear on that. Okay, Mr. Gross.
But you know, we don't have a good, by the way, if we don't have a good, positive, well-thought-out plan, you know, neighborhood council funding will be at stake. You know, that is always looming out there every time we go through budget problems.
Well, I'm glad you --
And if we don't really have a well-crafted, thought-out plan, you know, it could be on the chopping block by our colleagues, you know, because it's in, we're in limbo here.
Right.
We don't really know what we're doing. And so I'm uncomfortable with this non-direction.
And I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. I wanted to back up a little bit and go back a little bit to some of the things that I had said last meeting, but also regarding your point about the funding program being on the chopping blocks and as the chairman said, the chair said, absolutely it's not, you know, obviously not what we're talking about here today. But I think the potential for neighborhood council funding and neighborhood council, the empowerment services being on the chopping block was a concern and a fear that the mayor had, that when we took actions as a city to minimize, shrink departments and to really, you know, I said zero-based budget last time, where we're looking at core functions, which is kind of where this proposal came from, in part from a lot of discussions that we've had, in part from discussions in committee, in part from discussions at commission meetings, and in part from audits from the controller, and in large part from discussions that happened as part of the Neighborhood Council Review Commission discussions, that we were looking at core functions and talking to the department about what is, we don't want to do this, but what is the smallest, what are the, you know, what are the core functions that you have to do and what else can not fall by the wayside but is less important? If you have to prioritize everything, what's at the bottom of the list? And that's pretty much what every department has had to do in this budget process that we've been dealing with for the last year at least. And so we ended up with a much smaller department, and the fear when we saw this smaller department was that it was going to be under attack. You've seen in recent, you know, in the recent weeks, a couple of departments that have been under fire for the past, you know, few years, some have been consolidated, some have disappeared. You know, Human Relations Commission and the Commission on the Status of Women and Children, Youth, and Families, you know, and that was something the mayor didn't want to see. He didn't want to see having to fight for neighborhood empowerment every year. And so the thought was to give it, you know, to give it a home, you know, and hopefully give it more --
With a buffalo roam.
Hopefully give it more strength. But I think you're right. I think that is a concern, that we don't want neighborhood empowerment and the funding and the process to be under attack. But I also wanted to put it in context a little bit.
Can I just say, so was it premature to lay off these 20 people, or would we have done that anyways in terms of the overall cost savings that we were trying to achieve?
Well, I mentioned, you know, I mentioned last week when we met that the view from the Mayor's Office, and I think, you know, kind of a general sense, there's kind of a perfect storm against this, that hit this department. One of which, one of was the economy, where every department was going to shrink, and it happened to be not that large a department to begin with. So the department was going to shrink regardless of just budget necessity for the city. Number two, you had the controller's audit, which didn't shed a very nice, a very good light on the neighborhood councils, didn't show all of the wonderful things that neighborhood councils do, and really focused more on some of the, you know, the few situations. It focused on some of the few situations, but it also brought to light some things that need to be done. They had been identified by not only by the controller's audit, but by the NRC and by this committee and by Bonk, things that need to be revamped within the neighborhood council system. And the third was that the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment is almost fully staffed by engineers and architects. And unfortunately, the Engineering and Architects Association was a union that was not part of the recent union negotiations that gave some protections. And so when the city started talking about position eliminations and layoffs, Dun ended up in the crosshairs. So some of it, I could see, I think, premature is a fair assessment if you're only looking at it from a budgetary, from a programmatic standpoint.
Yeah.
From a budgetary standpoint, you know, we ended up in this situation. So it is unfortunate. That's where we are. Fortunately, some of the crafting of this proposal, of the Mayor's proposal, which, again, we're going to, you know, expand the discussion from this point, but as far as the Mayor's Office proposal, it came from all these discussions and all these committee meetings and all these, you know, even going out, you know, neighborhood councils that mayor's staff has been to and council office staff has been to, to get a sense of what's going right with neighborhood empowerment in the city, what's going wrong with neighborhood empowerment in the city. And the connection from the Mayor's Office perspective of connecting it with CDD was to match up strengths and weaknesses, match up some of the strengths that CDD has with some of the strengths that neighborhood empowerment at Dun has, and see where we can connect those departments and hopefully help each other. So I think there was a lot of thought behind it, so I would respectfully disagree that it was --
Still thought.
-- that we started from a blank sheet of paper without any, but I understand that perception, and I understand that, as I mentioned, that there needs to be a lot more discussion.
Right. So I guess the other thing I would say is, so by withdrawing this today and, you know, unleashing the clock or whatever, your goal is to what?
Well, I think that the mayor's --
What am I going to see in 45 days or what do you think you're going to use this time?
Well, I think we both, I think probably both offices will respond to you, but from the Mayor's Office perspective, I don't want to give the impression that the Mayor's Office is rescinding the idea. The mayor is still very supportive of this connection, these synergies that CDD and neighborhood empowerment can have. But I think that it's one proposal, and there are a number of other ideas out there. And so with a little bit of structure of a discussion, with all of the discussions that have been amazing and great but haven't produced that much as far as bringing neighborhood empowerment to a place where it needs to be, to a place that would safeguard the city but also provide the services that need to be provided that are different, as the councilman said, that are different than were needed 10 years ago or five years ago even. And so I think that, I think the hope is to take this short period of time and bring all the discussions that have happened together, and instead of starting the discussion --
So no more new discussions?
Well, no, I mean, I think there can be, but I think a lot of the proposals are already out there in bits and pieces or in full, you know, in full form. There's some neighborhood councils that have thrown proposals out there. I think your office has some suggestions, and we have some suggestions. So I mean, I don't think, honestly, I don't think there are a lot of new proposals out there. I just think that the proposals that have been floating around haven't been fully fleshed out. And so the hope, I think, is to have this discussion that we've, that has started, you know, that started a couple of years ago, and get to a point where we can say, this is what neighborhood councils need, this is what neighborhood empowerment needs.
But when it comes back to us, there's going to be, the mayor will have a new When it comes back to us, there's going to be, the mayor will have a new plan?
Well, I would put it a little differently, if I may, Mr. Gross, because just so that there's no ambiguity. And this is where the mayor's office and I may differ in some respect. What I'm going to propose today is disapproval of the mayor's proposed ordinance consolidating these departments. That will be the end of that proposal. We then have the opportunity to work with the mayor's office and this committee to develop a new proposal, which may have elements of that one if that is what is developed, or it may have nothing in common with that proposal. And I think it's going to be incumbent upon this committee, both here in City Hall and ideally through town halls, and by taking our show on the road a bit and dealing with, directly with the neighborhood council and its umbrella, the neighborhood councils and their umbrella organizations, to engage them directly in this dialogue so that collectively we develop the best policy to move forward.
And is it in the context of consolidating it with CDD, or is that out too? You're starting, are you starting with the blank page?
I'm starting with a completely blank page that will be filled with the proposals that the neighborhood councils have submitted, that we've developed in my office, your suggestions, the mayor's suggestions, other suggestions. I think we need to start from scratch on this. And until we do, we are putting the current proposal in the garage and starting anew. Now, certainly our new discussion will be informed by what we've learned in discussing this proposal.
Good.
It'll be informed by the strengths of this proposal as well as the weaknesses. But we will drive the policymaking with the mayor. This is, I'm not going to recommend that we set a future date for another proposal for the mayor to come back and have us start vetting it again. To the contrary, I want to use this opportunity for us to work in collaboration, not just with the mayor's office, but with 91 neighborhood councils and their umbrella organizations and the business community and others out there who are committed to the idea of making neighborhood empowerment a reality and making it more effective for the city. So I think that will be very much the role of this committee over the coming few months.
Good, I'm much clearer.
He's much more eloquent than I am.
I wouldn't say that, Aaron, but...
Nor would I. And I'm not doing it as under fire as you have been, Mr. Gross, so I appreciate it. Is there anything else that you wanted to add to Ms. Hahn's questions or generally?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I will, you know, make myself available to both of your offices, all 15 council offices, all neighborhood councils. I think there are a number of meetings coming up that are pre-existing meetings, that are alliance meetings, but also, you know, general neighborhood council meetings that, you know, and however we decide to do, I'm happy to, you know, happy to. The mayor's office wants to participate as appropriate and as much as possible.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, again, I've said it several times, you've been extremely forthright, I think, throughout this process, and you have offered an atmosphere of collaboration that I very much welcome and I look forward to taking advantage of.
We're still voting no on your proposal.
At my request.
So before we actually do that, let me, it looks like all the public, all of the public comment cards that we have here are all on this agenda item. So why don't we go to public comment on this item first? If there's any need for questions of Mr. Gross or CAO or Dunn or CLA, we'll come back to that, but why don't we go first to public comment on this issue? And we'll start first with Leonard Schaefer. Followed by Mike O'Gara.
Why, how did I get first up today?
Luck of the draw.
Members of the committee, big change. I had something written out, I had to change it all. I started with neighborhood councils prior to the 1999 charter at the Davidson Conference Center at USC where they were holding ideas, they were looking for ideas. And I got to say, this was good. I really appreciate what Aaron just did. Hope to see him tomorrow. What I'm going to say is very quickly, Mr. Corrigan, when you use the royal "we," I know that you mean to include neighborhood councils, and I hope you mean to include neighborhood councils, and I hope the rest of the city understands that that includes neighborhood councils, because "we," and I'm using that to include neighborhood councils, do not want a solution proposed upon us at this time. May I propose that we work through the neighborhood council organizations, like the LANK, which will be holding a meeting tomorrow where Mr. Gross will be, Mr. Frank will be, apparently Mr. Seitz won't have a whole lot to say tomorrow, but there will be others.
What meeting is that?
The LANK meeting tomorrow, the LA Neighborhood Council Coalition. And at meetings such as that, where we can have good, robust, open discussion, let's let the neighborhood councils take control of their destiny and see what we have to say and see what we propose and see where we can go, because I think we're ready to do it, and we've been ready to do it, and we will be happy to do it, and we will request your support and welcome your support in helping us do it. That's it.
Thank you. As you know, I have started that dialogue by visiting with LANK already, and if it wasn't clear on my comments earlier, certainly all of the umbrella organizations will be part of this discussion. Mr. O'Gara.
My name's Michael O'Gara, and I'm from the Sun Valley...
Followed by Glenn Bailey. Pardon?
Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council. I'm very happy to hear Mr. Gross's proposal, and I changed the beginning notes that I've written here. But I still want to go, there's some talk of changing this from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment to a group called ONE. I don't know what it stands for. And I would very much like to keep the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment as the master group. I do not want to see a new clock started, 45-day, 46-day clock. I think if we let the E&amp;A committee take this project, bring some kind of leadership to this, develop some kind of a legislative resolution between the mayor's office and the city council with a large amount of input from the NCs, then we'll all be going down the right road together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is...
Mr. Gross was at a Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Council meetings about three weeks ago, and we beat him up pretty badly, so I'm glad that he brought the word back to the boss.
Our next speaker is Glenn Bailey, followed by Dr. Clyde Williams. Mr. Bailey.
Good afternoon, council members. Glenn Bailey, I'm a member of the Encino Neighborhood Council, speaking as an individual person, though. First of all, I would concur the putting this in the circular file for now, if that's the appropriate wording. I do have a couple of concerns I wish you would consider, and you probably already have, but first of all, my understanding is that the 2010-2011 city budget funded Dunn for 90 days. Is that, if that's accurate, then my observation is this discussion regarding reorganization really began in January. This is now June. That was five-month period. 90 days to do the process that you're speaking about, I guess I'd raise questions about, if we couldn't do it in five months, are we going to be able to do it in 90 days? That's just a question in terms of realistic expectations. Also, I would make the observation that we have been through turmoil in the past with regards to leadership changes for the department. And I don't know if Mr. Kim has a more lucrative activity that he would be doing, but I would strongly urge that Mr. Kim, that the mayor, I request Mr. Kim to continue on until we get a decision on this, because I just don't think that the turmoil that could ensue would be worth it, as we're trying to look at the options in reorganization, and then we still, we have someone different at the helm, so that's just something I'd like to consider. We don't need a babysitter, but we do need oversight, and we really need to make sure that we strengthen those parts of the neighborhood councils, and I would include the alliances, both the citywide as well as, for example, the Valley Alliance represents now 32 neighborhood councils, a third of the system. And it seems to me of the Dunn staffing that maybe, rather than going to the different neighborhood councils, which I know is not in the current plan, is let's work, let's spend that staff time really working with the alliances, the regional alliances, makes it easy for people to get there, have that staff time, and then people, then we're working together as regional neighborhood councils. I know my time's up, I have some more, but maybe I'll do it under general comment.
There will be general public comment as well. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Next speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Barbara Monahan Burke. Dr. Williams, welcome.
Dr. Clyde Williams, Els Reno, Northeast LA, the LA 32 Neighborhood Council Board. We survived the city clerk's election process, thank God. We've survived for more than a year the DWP MOU. I don't know if we'll survive the CDD. And when I read it, I read with the perspective of the DWP memorandum of understanding. Well, it's how they interpret it, not how we interpret it. So there was a provision for facilitate meaningful participation. Oh, that's nice. Takes 60 days just to get a motion through a neighborhood council. So we get advised by their early notice system. Wow, that gives us a whole two weeks. We can't do anything in that period unless we start establishing policies that can override anything and maybe anticipate what's going to happen. But one of my major concerns is within the CDD. Who's in charge? Oh, he was the chief operating officer of the CRA. That does not give me confidence.
Who's that?
The new general manager for the CDD. And, you know, it's a question as to will we be overwhelmed? All things will have to go through the CDD general manager for approval. Well, he has obligations to certain nonprofits also. So I'm looking at, we will lose our monies to various nonprofits that we have to sponsor because if we want to get them approved, our budget's approved, boom, we have to conform. So I'm quite concerned whether we can survive the CDD. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Monahan Burke, followed by Diane Rosen.
Studio City, personally, I oppose the mayor's proposal to consolidate the Department of CDD and Dunn, the neighborhood council system itself, with CDD being over the neighborhood council within this structure. I also oppose the RFP about nonprofits' involvement. I think that it presupposes some involvement of nonprofits, and this is wrong. Nonprofits are not part of our mission under the charter, the structure of the neighborhood system, and going forward, meeting our chartered mission, not only ours as the neighborhood councils, but the cities, all the obligation the city and its departments and staff have back to the neighborhood council. This should be what this is all about, and we shouldn't suppose anything. I really commend the leadership of this committee going forward on this, and I know that we would all like to work with you. And that, this should be rolled out not only to the Valley Alliance, neighborhood councils, and LANK, but to the individual neighborhood councils with enough time for them to do their voting on it and get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Rosen, followed by Michael Cohen.
Good afternoon, committee members. I'm Diane Rosen, Chair of the Planning and Land Use of the Encino Neighborhood Council. And I want to thank Councilman Corrigan's staff for alerting me of this meeting. It came late, but it came, and I was able to get here. And I want to thank Janice Hahn, Councilman Hahn, for her support and through this long process. The neighborhood council system is working. I'm out there knocking on doors, talking to people, and it is working. We're respected, we're liked, and people feel the very thing that it was set up to do. They feel they have a voice to the community, the grassroots, to downtown City Hall. It is working. There have been problems, there's been falterings, and there's been mishaps and whatever, but we're grown up now, and we're working, and we are united, and we have the Valley Alliance, we have LANK, we have many organizations that many of us belong to and attend and go back and give reports to our neighborhoods. And the people, the stakeholders feel, and it's all over the Valley. They feel that they have a voice, that they can come to us, talk to us, we go back, and yes, it's taken time. We haven't had the greatest help from downtown through this in the beginning. There's been a lot of problems. Now, this city election that we just had was a horrible, horrible disaster. It was not well done, and we don't, I don't have the time to go into it, but it was not good. We do not want to be merged. We want to be what was chartered to do, a standalone department. If you have to have cutbacks, we have cutbacks. There's a lot of things we can do. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your staff.
Thank you very much.
Michael Cohen, receipt.
Here's Michael Cohen, excuse me, Mr. Cohen, followed by Mary Garcia. And as of now, that is the last card that I have. Anybody else wishing to speak, please complete a white comment card and bring it forward, please. Mr. Cohen, welcome.
Yes, thank you very much, Paul. You know, neighborhood councils haven't lived up to my full expectations and, or promise. They become in many cases, with some notable exceptions, carrying water for the city council and a conduit for funds from the city to nonprofits. But I think the promise is still there, and there's still an ability for them to succeed in spite of the... I had made a bunch of notes, but I was listening to Aaron, which he's been, and I've attended some of the budget meetings. But then when you hear that, one of the reasons that Dunn got the ax is because some of their members are represented by one union, and therefore they're vulnerable, which means to hell with the neighborhood councils, what they need, we're going to chop the budget and chop them as well. I mean, it got me a little irritated, and not at him personally, because that wasn't his decision, I'm sure, certainly not alone, but...
You got him to unionize.
Yes, exactly. That should be the last reason that anyone gets cut, because they're not represented by a stronger or a powerful or more accommodating union. It's what should have been good for the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and neighborhood councils, and that would be the very last criteria applied. Gosh, and as far as the election, total disaster. I don't know who's the war to blame. Some neighborhood, the neighborhood councils didn't do much in outreach, the city clerk certainly didn't do any, and some council members, one who's absent on this committee, committee member, didn't do any outreach whatsoever for neighborhood council elections. And you know what I'm talking about, Mr. Zillen. As far as Dunn being subsumed under CDD, when Larry Frank first brought that up, I said, to me, that's DOA, and I can't see how any neighborhood council would want to support that. You're going to have another, a third layer of bureaucracy. Dunn was the first layer, possibly necessary, certainly in the formative stages. I have my opinion on that now. I think LANK and other organizations can manage our affairs. I think we can do it very well. I think we're mature enough. But now you're going to have it under three layers. Now you're going to have it under the general managers of CDD and then the assistant manager. The whole focus of CDD is completely different. It's community development. Neighborhood council is about community empowerment, and actually has a balance against the very powerful unions and lobbyists and moneyed interests. And I don't see that happening in CDD. I think you're going to be shut away and put in a closet. Wish we had more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if you'd like, we'll have general public comment at conclusion of this matter and then come back. Since, just a quick response, because several people have mentioned the elections, please do remember that we will be having a comprehensive report back from the clerk into this committee about the elections, what worked, what didn't work, how to make it more effective, so that will be a matter of significant discussion within this committee at the conclusion of this cycle. Ms. Garcia, welcome.
Hi. Sorry I got here late, traffic. I very much like what I've heard since I arrived. I wasn't aware of really what was going to happen today, but I can say CDD is really the wrong place for us. I've worked with CDD and I admire what they do, but we do, we have a different mission, and we're very proud of that. I applaud the committee for doing what you're doing right now, sitting here and listening and asking questions and... listening and asking questions and, and what's right, what, I mean, how did it work? How can we make it better? We've never been asked these questions. And, and together, working together, I'm so excited to be working with you on this. I just wanted to say that since this all started, I have done tremendous research on neighborhood councils and systems and things. And I started with, you know, in 1999, and I went to 1960, and I ended up with Socrates, okay? So I want you to know that it's always a work in progress, and as times change and things change, some things don't and, and most do. But I feel that we can have a much stronger city if, if we work together, and that's really all I wanted to say.
Beautiful.
Thank you very much.
That's true.
All right, as that is the last card I have on this agenda item, it's going to be the recommendation of this committee to disapprove the, to recommend that the council disapprove the proposed ordinance of consolidation. And without objection, that will be the recommendation of this committee. And, Mr. Gross, yes?
And then I would say, I would, I really look forward to participating and getting input. I'd like us to do some town hall meetings and really meet out there in the communities and, and get real, live information on the future of this, this movement.
That is certainly my intention, to draw input from the 91 councils, as well as the, the alliances. I think that's, that's the mayor's office's intention as well. Mr. Gross.
Absolutely. Thank you again, Aaron Gross, Mayor's Office. I wanted to, I wanted to comment, but only after the committee had taken its action, because my, my comment is, is more general public comment, or general, general comment. So I don't know if the committee had taken, taken the action yet.
Yeah, we have it. We just did it.
Okay, okay.
We just turned down your proposal.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Unanimously.
Thank you. So I, I kind of wanted to address an issue that, that's come up, and I just, because we've got the microphone, because we've got advocates behind me, because we've got the committee here, or quorum of the committee, I wanted to address one issue that came up today, but came up last week and continues to come up, or the, regarding the strong neighborhood councils. And there are neighborhood councils all over this city that, that function very well and do excellent work and need very little assistance from neighborhood council, from, I'm sorry, from the, from neighborhood empowerment staff. And I wanted to make two comments. One is, as I mentioned last week, there are certain things that should have been established on day one for neighborhood councils, certain transparencies and certain consistencies and certain oversight that, that didn't exist because that wasn't the focus of the department. And I hope that that's part of the discussion as we go forward, as what sort of things should exist in neighborhood councils, just so we, as a city, have an appropriate, appropriate function of how neighborhood councils work. And again, not to get, not to get in the way of neighborhood councils, but to make sure that there are certain safeguards and certain transparencies and certain oversight. And there's a word I'm, I'm missing. Well, I'll, I'll think of it, I'm sure, after the, after the lights go off.
Accountability.
Accountability.
Accountability, excuse me, thank you, accountability. That should, like I said, should have been in place since day one, and even, even the, the perfect functioning neighborhood council still needs, those provisions need to be, need to be discussed and need to be established. Number two is because, as we were talking about the neighborhood council movement needing, needing different things now, I think part of this discussion we're going to have is how we can harness some of that, some of that skill and power and strength that those neighborhood councils that do function well, how we can harness that power and help, help connect that to other neighborhood councils that are, are functioning less well or having trouble with outreach, whether because, you know, whether, whether because the department needs to do more, because there are certain, certain ways we can get to other parts. I mean, I think the Palms Neighborhood Council last time talked about how hard it is to get into apartment buildings. And that's, absolutely, I'm sure that's a problem all over, I know that's a problem all over the city. And hopefully, there are neighborhood councils that, that have the, have that same problem, but have figured out some way to do it that we can, we can harness that strength. And that, you'll hear the, the general manager of Dunn talk about the need when you have minimized resources, and we talk over and over again, minimizing, minimizing resources, and how we have to focus those resources where the need is. We did it with COPS on the dots and the ComNet program. We do it with the micropaver system for paving streets. We do it for the Family Development Network. You know, we do it trying to focus our resources where is needed. And hopefully, whatever comes out of this, we can get out of the way of neighborhood councils that are, that are, that are functioning well, put some standard, put some standardizing, and then, and then also, you know, help, help out where we can.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Gross. All right, that brings us to general public comment. If anyone would like to fill out a white speaker card for general public comment, come on up. And I'll give you a minute to do that. In the meantime, our first speaker will be Michael Cohen, followed by Leonard Shafer and Glenn Bailey. We didn't want to interrupt your thoughts too much.
What thoughts? Ramblings or a broken mind? Yeah, as I said, I mean, the, the promise of neighborhood councils still, it's still is out there, and I don't think it has been fulfilled. But I think, I think they're ready for the next step, be more involved in their future. And what I had in mind, and again, even though I'm with the received council and the council liaison, neighborhood council liaison, and I'm on the advocacy, budget advocates committee, as an alternative, these are my own thoughts, although my neighborhood council has said they want a standalone Dunn, they have voted on that, and they support the Sean Simons proposal of having a, a very large contingent of volunteers with nonprofit fund, handling the funding with a smaller condensed partner, neighborhood empowerment, again, standalone. I think an organization like LANK should be officially recognized by the city. It's been recognized by over half of the neighborhood councils, as many as 50 or 60 at times participate, and can be a very guiding, guiding oriented organization, much as Dunn has been in the past, giving that oversight and, and insisting on transparency and following the regular rules. There are neighborhood councils that flout that, either through ignorance or because of personal bias. But I think a LANK organization can give that kind of oversight, saving the city, you know, we know, untold thousands of dollars, and giving grassroots input. I think that was the promise, if anything, that the mayor had in mind with CDD. CDD is used to working at a very low level in the community, which is a good thing, which got my interest initially, but their emphasis is quite different. And not only that, they are very much a bureaucratic organization, pretty much run by, out of the mayor's office. Neighborhood councils are quite contrary to that. They are, in some sense, antagonistic to the way things are generally done. But they've been forced into the position of having to go to the city for both support in many different ways, both financial and legislative. So having that independence, I think, is really crucial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Leonard Shafer, followed by Glenn Bailey.
Good afternoon again. I appreciate Mike's comments. I will not visit the, the LANK issue right now. I appreciate them as being the founding chair and the current chair of the LANK. I think we do a pretty good job, but, but what I would, what I would offer here today is, is that organizations such as the LANK and the Valley Alliance and such could be very helpful. When the Neighborhood Council Review Commission wanted to look at some ideas and get some suggestions, we held some very, very successful town hall meetings. The advantage, of course, being that we could suspend a lot of the rules that, that were constrained by, in, in many instances, when we have official meetings and such as that, as long as we can keep a, you know, not too many council, city council members at any one meeting at any one time. But we would offer, and I formally would offer the help of the LANK in, in bringing about those kinds of town hall meetings all over the city. And I know that I could prevail upon the, the chairs of the, of the various alliances to do the same in, in their areas. And this is where you're going to get the thoughts, this is where you're going to get the ideas, this is where you're going to learn what makes success, what doesn't make success, and such as that. So please draw upon us, because we'll be there to support your efforts.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Glenn Bailey, followed by Sean Simons. Bailey?
Glenn Bailey, first of all, a few words of thanks. Thanks to you, Councilmember Corian, for sending out your e-blass yesterday. Even though we get agendas that really graphically and, you know, draws attention to a special meeting that by its very nature is a 24-hour advance notice, so thank you. Also wanted to acknowledge the time above and beyond, and I had, didn't go to probably most of the meetings, but that Mr. Frank and Mr. Gross and Mr. Kim participated literally since January with the neighborhood council folks in, in these dialogues. Many of them were on Saturdays, so it wasn't just Monday through Friday. I think that the criteria, it's been said before, in terms of how we measure what we're doing should be, the first goal of neighborhood councils being effective and strong, community-based organizations that really help make this city more of an effective service provider in improving the quality of life of people in their neighborhoods. That should be the first criteria. Now, we recognize the city doesn't have money, to say the least, so certainly the financial considerations need to be entered in that. But the first measure, it seems to me, the first litmus test should be what's best for the neighborhood councils and making them effective. It should not be the controller's audit. The controller's audit brought out some deficiencies, but many of those deficiencies were brought out by many of us over the past several years, and unfortunately, if they had been acted on in a timely manner, many of those things would have disappeared from the controller's office. That's a failure of the system, both the city, the commission, and the neighborhood councils themselves, that have to take responsibility for a number of those things, but should not be used as an argument for making these changes, in my opinion, unless it can just be an example of how we can do better going forward, and that's fine. Lastly, I want to conclude with the whole issue of the elections. You're going to hear from the city clerk, and I, could I indulge?
Go ahead and finish the thought. We will be revisiting.
I know that, and I'm not going to give you specifics, but I do want to let you know that our neighborhood councils, one of the 22 neighborhood councils that the city clerk ran the 2008 election. Following that election, they had a so-called town hall meeting downtown here at City Hall for all those 22 councils to report to them their experiences, where they then prepared their little report about how wonderful everything is that probably justified them to be able to take over the elections for all 90, 90, now 90 neighborhood councils. My request to you is to mandate them to have similar, before they come to this committee, they need to go out and listen to the neighborhood council, the people that participate in this process, and they need to do that on a regional basis. So it's not good enough, in my opinion, to have one session down at City Hall on a weeknight. They need to come and meet in every region of this city. It doesn't have to be their election regions, but there ought to be a meeting in the San Fernando Valley, there ought to be a meeting in the west side, and the east side, and down the harbor, where folks could conveniently be able to give their input, both good and bad, in terms of their experience with the elections, and that that be incorporated in the report back that comes to this committee. Because without that, you're going to get a very one-sided, candy-coated report about how wonderful everything is. And I can tell you, with my experience in, in the various levels with this, that that is not what you're going to hear from a lot of folks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Sean Simons, followed by Mike O'Gara. Ms. Simons, welcome.
How are you? I think it's important at this time that we're able to put together some kind of stopgap measure to make sure that we're able to get through the July 1st date until a new department is formed, so that we can make sure that the lights stay on, and for my counsel, that we're able to make copies, which seems to be difficult these days. But I ask that this committee begin to put together a guiding commission to search for a new head of this new department, a commission that would be made up of council, mayor staff, bonk, and most importantly, some neighborhood council representatives. At this juncture, where things are changing, it is important that a new head be able to invigorate the system, and most importantly, inspire councils to reach beyond their current status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Bed and cleanup, Mike O'Gara, unless there's somebody else who'd like to speak. This is the last card that I have.
Quickly, I didn't mention the CDD in my talk before, because I feel we're on a blank page, and I do want to pursue the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment as a standalone committee, and quite, I'm quite opposed to what the previous speaker said. I think we should keep Mr. Kim on to go through this transition. He knows what's been going on for two years. I think he's learned a lot in, in the last six months, and I, I think it would help us to keep him in place.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. And I stand corrected, we have one, one other card for, from Lisa Kahan Davis.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much. I want to speak just quickly about outreach. I am a volunteer on the Studio City Neighborhood Council. I said on three committees, outreach, environmental affairs, and cultural affairs. When I say volunteer, everybody volunteers their time, and you have to have a passion, a commitment, and a purpose. And the neighborhood councils have given a lot of us reason to stand up and have a voice about our communities. But one thing I did experience with outreach on this particular election for Regency was best practices. It's really important that you pull in experienced, well-versed personnel for the next role of elections that have an insight and that could bring their expertise so that there aren't any learnings along the way. It's really important that, what we found out is that we got 11 of the communities to pull their strengths together and put ads in the daily news, and at a consolidated dollar amount, that budget was shrunk by putting forces together to get the job done. And we communicated it out to our communities for Studio City, postcards and mailers, and we did a lot of guerrilla warfare and going to the farmer's market. It takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of people, but it, there's, there's solutions without paying a lot of money. And then I just wanted to say about the government sites during election, it's elaborate. It's tough to make your way through, and not everybody is an online user. We have a lot of senior citizens that don't use online media. So it's really important that we reach out to them on foot or through postings, through public notices. And I just want us to keep in mind that we have a wide variety of audiences and how they get their news. So throw my name in there, I will help you make this an easy transition, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your willingness, and like all people who are involved in the neighborhood council movement, your willingness to step up and help your community. I appreciate it very much. With that, if there's nothing further, we are adjourned. I look forward to seeing you all next week. Thank you.